So we're going.
We're good. Yep.
And let me find Ruth. Oops, oops. They keep jumping around here.
Keep jumping around?
Yeah, as people are populating the.
Fifty-seven, whoa.
Now we're in business.
Welcome, Ruth.
She is.
Sorry for the traffic jam.
Yeah, sorry.
I know, it's hard getting in this, hard getting in this place. All right, so now that we're all here. That's right, parking was hard to find. Okay, so let's call this Wilton Board of Education regular meeting, although virtually, to order May 7th at 7:05. First order of business is to review and approve the agenda. I would like a motion to approve the agenda and reversing Sections D and E. Is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Still moved. I make a motion to approve the agenda and reverse section D and E.
Thank you. Second? Glenn, I think seconded. All right, all in favor?
Whatever.
Aye.
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 Thank you. All right, time for comments from the public. This is via email. We do this at the beginning of the meeting and at the end of the meeting. Lucille, are there any comments from the public?
Yes, there are. First coming.
Okay, if you could, if you did.
Okay, Paul Bologna, resident, he didn't put his street address in. The BOE already knows that the budget can be cut by any percentage despite the MBR, minimum budget requirement. The BOE hiding behind the MBR is disingenuous and a blame emission lie to the BOF and the residents of Wilton and gives back the entire 3 million surplus and budget, any reserves needed into the coming budget, which will require further cuts of 2020-21 operating budget. What is the potential MBR penalty we are talking about? Penalty could be from 0 to 427,008. First, if MBR shortfall is made up in following year's budget, then no penalty applies at all. This would allow BOE to cut budget by 10% or more for one year during this crisis and raise the budget back to MBR levels in the following year. That's what prudent organizations are doing during these unprecedented economic times, cutting budgets today with the hope of restoring budgets in the future. Second, any penalty could be waived by the state due to crisis circumstances. Third, if the penalty is equivalent to the state aid of approximately 427K received last year, then surely cutting the budget by 10% to save 8.0-plus million far outweighs a penalty of some 400K. Finally, contracts are subject to cancellation under force majeure. Time to do some real work and realign school contracts to economic realities. Will there be changes to school services that affect students, teachers, administrators, and parents? Yes. Are our lives already changed due to this crisis? Yes. We will, we have to do more when less? Yes. That's what sacrifice by all looks like. The consequences of reckless governance in times like this could actually bankrupt Wilton and the schools. We were unprepared for the crisis, for this crisis. We can easily be unprepared for the next if decisive action is not taken to defend against the unknown. Bankruptcy would have far graver consequences than a one-year 10%-plus budget cut. If Buffett and the smartest minds in the world don't know the future, Buffett is currently buying nothing and sitting with 135-plus billion in cash, then what makes Wilton's boards know anything more than nothing about the future? Are we able to self-govern or not? Now is the time for all involved in Wilton to sacrifice today as to preserve the possibility up for tomorrow. The alternative is far worse, respectfully, Paul Bologna. And there's one more.
Okay.
The second comment is from EdPatt28WalnutPlace. I am in favor of returning the 3 million of unspent funds to the town. I also support a further 5% reduction in the BOE budget for next year. The cut should not affect building maintenance, IT equipment, and supplies used by students. To do so simply defers required expenditures. It is time for the BOE to recalibrate and reorganize its administrative and classroom personnel given declining enrollment. Declining student performance reveals the false notion that more money equates to better academic results. No more comments.
Okay, thank you for reading those. We will also have an opportunity at the end of the meeting. The consent agenda, has everyone had a chance to review that? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? I'm gonna say Glenn chimed in first. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Whoever did that, it's fine. Thank you, Gretchen. All right, all in favor? Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, anyone opposed? Okay. Now we're gonna switch to Section E as we voted on earlier. We are gonna go through these budget, different components and items, beginning with discussing and approving fiscal year '20, end-of-year financial projection. And we have the papers. Is there any paper? Is there anything you want to add to that or summarize?
Sorry. Other than reminding everybody, we cut it down to 50,000 for the bus contract, nothing has changed on it.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion to approve.
Right, Jen, moved. And Glenn, I'm gonna take that as a second. Any discussion?
Nope.
Any discussion? Okay. All in favor? Say aye, raise your hands.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed? Abstain? Passed. Thank you. Now we move on to discuss and approve the purchase of the technology equipment of up to $800,000. Is there a motion to do so? Then we'll go into discussion.
Motion to discuss.
Well, you want to approve it, and then I'll go, and then the piece of it is discuss it.
Okay, motion to approve.
Yeah, I usually don't do it that way, but thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jen. All right, discussion, questions? We have seen this concept before. Any further questions about how it works? And again, this was different than perhaps the original lease idea that was in the former proposed budget.
Yep. No, it makes sense to do it. I think it's, you know, I support this move.
Okay. I just want to clarify that we do want to proceed with this because of the risk that if we don't, we will be behind the eight ball when we need to replenish our units or devices. And there's a chance that there may not be anything available, and our kids would kind of not have what they needed for school if we had to do a homeschool or e-learning again, correct?
Yeah, I think.
Some of the information that.
Supply chain concerns right now.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? Right, all in favor? Say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any, any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, approved, thank you. Discuss and approve, these are the proposed encumbrances. Anne has supplied us a list. It's revised since we did approve the technology purchase. So the amount, you know, we took the technology lease cost out of there. Is that the difference, Anne, between this list and last time?
Yes, correct.
It is.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Or any questions or discussion?
Yeah, can you just run through what is on there now? I think there are three areas that are currently on the encumbrance proposal. Is that right, Kevin? Remaining.
We have more, a few more. Equipment. It's equipment at $200,000, training at 34, operating and general supplies at 50,000, transportation services at 37,579. Textbooks and workbooks.
They are encumbrances.
Yes, they are.
Yes, they are in the encumbrance.
Total amount. 8,822. So textbook works, workbooks 36,243, building maintenance and supplies 10,000, equipment, repair, and maintenance 10,000.
Glenn, you might be thinking of reserves.
No, okay.
This is different.
Okay, got it. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, these are the items that we can purchase now.
We can encumber, right, I got it, okay.
All right, thanks. Any other questions or discussion? All right, is there a motion to approve the encumbrances as outlined in the briefing summary of May 6th?
So moved.
Thank you, Glenn. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mandy. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you, approved. All right, the next item, discuss and approve request to reserve unexpended funds from fiscal year '20. And I think, Glenn, this is probably your category question.
Right, yeah, that was it. Yeah, you got it.
All right, Kevin, do you want to describe that, or Anne?
Sure. So this is a proposal, as you just mentioned, to reserve. It's a total of $869,000 in the general fund to address unanticipated costs related to the COVID-19 impact on the Wilton Public Schools, or the potential impact. So the first category is tied to special education compensatory education costs. And that's in the amount of $350,000. The second is special education legal costs in the amount of 169,000. And then the third is in other COVID-related, you know, operating and program costs. So, you know, as we had discussed in each of those, they're just an incredible number of unknowns, and so not knowing what we may have to encounter when we return to school, we thought it prudent to request a set aside of additional funds should we need them.
Okay, and we discussed these at the last meeting, and the special education legal costs are, there's a number there for that, so thank you. Any questions or discussion? Is, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Glenn. A second?
Second.
I got Gretchen's hand first. Okay, thank you, Gretchen. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Any opposition, any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you. Approved. Our next item, discuss and approve, propose, yeah. Discuss and approve, propose superintendent's, propose revised budget for fiscal year '21 in the amount of $82,344,563. Kevin, do you want to just, you know, you've seen it obviously, but do you want to highlight it or summarize it or anything?
Yeah, do you mind, I have a few things I'd like to say in setting this up, if you don't mind. It's gonna take a couple of minutes.
Yeah, please do.
You know, first and foremost, to all of you, I just want to say to you, our board, thank you for guiding our district and partnering with all of us as we work through this unprecedented time. I also want to take a minute and just recognize all of our staff, teachers, and administrators, and thank them too for their incredible efforts at providing instruction and support to our students and families. It's, it's been a tough six or seven weeks. It's been a really tough couple of days. And I just want to highlight a couple of points here as we get into the budget conversation. You know, we knew and we were expecting the governor and the commissioner to announce the cancellation of school for the remainder of the year. And while the announcement felt inevitable, it is still tremendously upsetting. I've spent the last day and a half thinking about all of our students and teachers who won't come back to school this year. I get upset even just trying to formulate my thoughts around this. All of the classroom and team community rituals and relationships developed and deepened over the course of this year that give a single, unique, and one-of-a-kind definition to the experience. We have a habit of saying here that our kids only get one time through our schools. And it's the relationships with the teachers and with their peers that often make that one time just so special and so indelible. So I really, really feel so sorry for our kids and for their teachers. So that was bad news, and then you layer on top of that the notification by Governor Lamont that live graduation ceremonies won't be permissible. And I'll just let you know, on the mood meter that we've talked about, where most of the time I'm solidly in the yellow, I know I joined many and am solidly in the blue. And while these decisions are completely necessarily appropriate, they still constitute a substantial loss for our students, families, and staff. And so to all of them, to our seniors especially, I want to say again just how sorry I am. And I say this in setting up a budget conversation because it's important to just name really explicitly just how important and valuable our schools are in terms of the relationships that students have with each other, that they have with their teachers, and how those relationships undergird the magic of the instruction and the education. So in spite of that bad news, I've also witnessed firsthand through the eyes of my own children the Herculean efforts of our teachers and staff at maintaining connections, providing support and encouragement, and delivering good lessons daily. This week, we celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week, and I do hope our teachers know how much we truly appreciate them. Our PTAs this week have been wonderfully creative in their own efforts to recognize our staff, and so I'd like to say a special thank you to them as well. I think it goes without saying that it does absolutely take a village, and Wilton is a very, very special village. It's a village that cares about its residents and especially cares about its young. The level of care that this community demonstrates is one of its defining features that distinguishes from its neighbors. And it's from within that belief system that I proposed this for adoption, this recommended revised budget. I believe that we as Wilton have an obligation to provide a Wilton education to our Wilton children and families. In that, this community is defined by its tremendous capacity to care. Similarly, our schools are defined. Care is one of the hallmarks of a Wilton education. Some of the other hallmarks of a Wilton education include the highest quality instruction delivered by the best teachers in small classes, opportunities for students to achieve and excel through a broad range of experiences in the classroom, on the stage, and athletic fields, through arts, drama, and music, opportunities to pursue personal interests through a diverse and comprehensive catalog of curricular and extracurricular activities, opportunities to grow and develop as human beings through exposure to rich and varied content and under the guidance and tutelage of our compassionate and gifted staff. Providing a Wilton education requires human and material resources. Our revised budget seeks to fund a Wilton education while also responding to the climate in which we find ourselves. The choices we've made propose protecting the most important features of our Wilton education, class sizes, staff, and programs. This revised budget defers expenditures on facility work at Middlebrook, narrows our professional learning plans, and defers proposed spending on things like classroom furniture. We make these revisions also knowing that the future is uncertain. As of this point in time, it's our great hope that we'll be able to resume normal operations in the fall, but that seems highly unlikely. As you'll see later in tonight's meeting, we have begun planning for what we believe may be a very disrupted return to school. Present in our thinking is a dizzying number of logistical considerations, foremost among them being those that ensure the health and safety of students and staff. It's only as we begin to play out some of these considerations and develop scenarios that we'll begin to see the financial implications. And I share this only to say that our budget reflects our best hopes for what the year can be, and it is likely, as we did this year, that we'll need to adjust rapidly. And that's my final point about this budget. We've demonstrated that we're capable of adjusting rapidly while adhering to our primary mission and purpose. As we move forward, we will continue to adjust as we must and remain focused on serving our students and families. Thank you.
No, thank you, Kevin. Thank you very much. Well said. Is there further discussion or questions?
Yeah, if I could, Kevin, I'd like to add, and it was well said what you said, my thoughts and my concerns, as we begin to open up now, before the summer even gets here, and companies begin to reopen, and parents who have been working from home are now expected to go back to work. I have great concern and great worry and great hopes and pray for them that they'll be able to do so, where they've been now, you know, front and center with their children and with their students during, in the home in the day, helping them with their e-learning, et cetera. If they get called back to work now or expected to return, the hardship it's going to put on them is just mind-boggling to me. And I wish that all of them the very best. I wish there was more that we could do or something we could do to help them, those who have the dilemma in front of them, but there isn't sadly. So my thoughts go out to them, to all those families out there who have now got to figure out, well, I gotta go back to work, kids aren't going to school, what do I do? And it's a shame, it really is.
Thanks. Okay, is there a motion to adopt the superintendent's proposed budget of $82,344,563?
Yeah, I think it's important to say that this is an absolute flat budget with the prior year.
Yes.
Not more spending. It's exactly what our budget was this past year. We have savings from this past year's budget that's going to go back to the town as it is. There will be hopefully some savings in the reserves that we've asked for that we will not have to spend, that will then also go back to the town. But I, from my perspective, we need to make every effort that we can back to normalcy. And we're not, we don't know what the new normal is going to be, but to the extent that we can manage it and deal with it and present it to our students as they return to school in the fall, we need to do that. I, there's nothing more important than having them come back in a manner that gets them back into the routine they're used to, the teaching, teacher's faces they're used to seeing, the experiences they're used to having to try and calm the waters out there is very, very important. And this budget does that to a great extent, totally, no, but to a great extent, and to the best extent I think we can do. So I, all in favor of this, I am. It's the best we can do, and it's the right thing to do in spite of other concerns that would interest.
So I'm gonna take that as a motion to approve, Glenn?
You got it.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you very much. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mandy. Any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Budget is approved. Thank you. So I don't mean to pile on, but I guess I will. And Kevin and I and Glenn did not obviously talk to each other ahead of time, so, but I, like, when we passed the last budget in February, it's one of the most critical things a board of ed does, so I took a couple of minutes just to talk a little bit about it. So now that we have budget 2.0, I'm gonna do that again. I'm glad that we were unanimous in approving the various budget components in this time of crisis. And this is to summarize. First, we adopted the May 6 budget projection, which shows a 2.95 million positive variance. This high amount is completely unusual, and it's because of the pandemic has resulted in online learning only. So usual expenses have been reduced since March 11th, including utilities, conferences, substitutes, equipment, supplies, transportation costs, and more. With these unexpected funds, we are doing several things to help our schools as we look forward to as yet an unclear future about what the learning environment will be. First, we are purchasing some routine items for next year, like equipment, supplies, and textbooks, which takes them out of next year's budget request. Also, rather than embarking on a lease purchase of Chromebooks and teacher laptops, we are purchasing them now. This avoids interest charges and lease payments in future budgets, and very importantly, by purchasing now, we can hopefully avoid problems created by increased national demand and supply chain issues. That amount was $770,000. Of the 1.8 remaining from the 2.95 year-end projected variance, we are requesting that the Board of Selectmen hold 869,000 in reserve funds, should we need them for special education compensatory costs, special education increased legal costs, and costs that go beyond next year's ability to address health, safety, and program needs related to COVID. As a note, if funds reserved are not used, they are returned to the town's fund balance. We are recommending to the Board of Finance a flat year-to-year budget of $82,344,563. Back in February, we adopted a budget proposal that represented a $1.55 million year-over-year increase. That is gone through pre-purchasing some items as we described, through deferring the $550,000 Middlebrook renovation project, through reducing training and substitutes, and eliminating and deferring many other items across many other accounts. If all of these strategies are implemented, we can preserve programs and support for students, class size guidelines, and staffing levels for next year. We do this because students enrolled during this crisis deserve no less in educational equality than our students did before the crisis. We also want to maintain our attraction of new families. Anticipate that schools will look different next year, in hard ways to imagine, let alone implement, so we need the resources to provide students the best education possible and resources that allow staffing levels and flexibility when we have to shift from certain areas to others. Our students will begin next year with more needs than the usual summer lag, and we will need to adjust. There may be a combination of onsite and online learning. There may be disruptions. Although not yet defined, health and safety protocols will have to be implemented. We need the resources to anticipate and plan for various needs. Some, like athletics, may be less costly than normal if we have to shorten seasons. Others, like academic and mental health support, may be more costly than normal. We have responded to the Board of Ed requests for other budget scenarios to take us below flat year-to-year budget. In, ahead of discussing these, I want to say upfront that these would not be sufficient to meet our needs for all the reasons I just described. The NBR scenario, which Kevin can detail, would reduce teachers, possibly increase class sizes, and erode programs and support that students will need. Reducing NBR, beyond NBR, turns our system into something not recognizable. So our recommendation for a year-to-year flat budget, as Glenn has said, appropriation will now go to the Board of Finance, along with the various scenarios that we'll hear about in a minute. Because there aren't the usual hearings, annual town meeting, and referendum, input from the public is more important than ever. We encourage parents and community members to make your viewpoint and opinions known through emails to the Board of Finance. In place of voting, please take the time to send emails. We are in this together for our students. So thank you, again, Kevin, to you and your team for putting all these proposals together and coming up with a strategy that I think, as Glenn said, is the best we can do in this time of crisis. The Board of Finance did request other scenarios, so let's discuss those a little. The Board of Finance did request other scenarios. So let's discuss those a little bit.
I'm going to share my screen if you don't mind. We can, we talk through them. Let me just move some things around here. Okay, so you've, I always forget to press the blue share button. There you go. Are you able to see my screen? Yes?
Yeah, with a magnifying glass.
All right, so the, this is the.
Yeah, we have seen the, yeah, we've got that also. Okay, we saw a draft, but okay, there it is. We, it's all, don't worry about it. It's fine. I've got my glasses.
That's okay. So I've got, we've got a few scenarios to walk through here. So you saw that MBR scenario and you've heard the explanation about MBR. That I'm just really going to talk in high level detail. And then, you know, if, as we see necessary, we can refine the details. But I think Debbie, your comments about fundamentally altering, you know, what a Wilton education is, is right on point. So in this scenario, we obviously go back through in broad categories and focus again on the non-personnel accounts. But beginning with MBR, there's no way, no way to avoid reducing staff. So as we shared the other night, a budget reduction to MBR would reflect the dollar equivalent of about five point five certified staff. And as I mentioned, then in this scenario, my approach, if we had to go there, would be to try to work through attrition and look at the vacancies we have and then work with our various administrative leaders to manage those vacancies. So we're not having to incur further staff layoffs. At the two percent level, I've got to zoom these, I guess. You know, we had, it's a, and you'll just have to correct me if I don't get it quite right. But it was about an additional four hundred and sixty or so thousand dollars beyond MBR. And so at that point. You know, it's an additional four and a half staffer though. And so when we move to the two percent level, I don't think we would be able to achieve those staffing, that that level of staffing reductions purely through attrition. So then we'd have to look at, you know, program modification or reduction, perhaps course elimination, potential class size reduction. We'd have to start looking at the range of personnel cuts. And as we engage in that process, you know, what I would say to you is we would start in my office and work all the way through the organization and look at every position. And evaluate each of those positions to ensure that any kind of staffing modification. Sought to protect program goals, but was also equitable. To the best extent possible. At that five percent level. This is when you really, you can't recognize the Wilton education anymore. So we're talking, you know, far more dramatic in terms of staffing reductions. By our estimates, again, we were just, you know, kind of ballparking based on maybe an average certified staff salary. And so we're estimating approximately a reduction of thirty-six point five FTE. And chances are probably be greater than that because we would be reducing from the ranks, not only of our certified staff, but also from our classified staff, our custodial staff. Our discretionary staff, et cetera. And so that number would likely balloon. And again, as a strategy for reductions, we would look, you know, wholesale across the entire organization. And there's just no escaping, you know, significant program impact at that point. And so then in contemplating what those choices are, we have to think about, you know, what are the most essential services we provide? And then what are the services that we would consider? I hesitate to even use the word not essential or less essential, but we would have to go through a decision-making process. And so that just puts on the table, I think, you know, all of the, a range of reductions. You know, and we would probably touch every area of the operation. Ten percent. You know, at this level, you're looking at an eight point two million dollar reduction here. That magnitude of the staffing reductions, we're estimating, you know, somewhere around seventy-eight and a half. And again, you know, as we look across the entire organization and contemplate certified, classified, discretionary. Likely that that number would be, would be much greater. And at that point, you know, with the reduction of seventy-eight staff members. I mean, it's beyond catastrophic. So thank, you know, the other points that we made and Andrea and I still have some work to do to really get some more clarity. But we've discussed the MBR and the potential loss of, you know, ECS funding. And so, you know, while it's not a substantial amount of dollars comparatively, it's an additional reduction potentially. And then similar to that, as we discussed within IDA, there's a maintenance of effort provision that also requires a particular level of funding. And if you don't achieve that maintenance of effort, you also put that grant at risk. So there are a lot of questions and considerations about the unforeseen consequences of reductions at this level. And so the IDA grant is substantial. We also fund a number of our special educators through that grant. And if we put that in jeopardy, then, you know, we also, you know, potentially risk not only losing more staff members, but endangering, well, we certainly will endanger the way that we are able to provide services to our special education students. So bleak and grim and all of that at these levels for sure.
Yeah, Kevin, I would add to that, if that were the case, it would open us up to a tsunami of litigation. If we were not able to meet our legal requirements in that area, or we chose not to.
It would also cause for there to be a further erosion of regular programming.
Oh, yeah.
In an effort to stave off, you know, litigation. So the programs that we know, even thinking of them being a little different, would be devastatingly undermined and cut.
Yeah, we spoke earlier today. At that point, we get into cutting athletics. We get into cutting the music programs, the arts. I mean, nothing gets, nothing is untouched at that point, except because of our legal obligations, special ed. And to the extent that we can't do anything there, it increases the impact across the, all the other areas. And the risk of doing anything in special ed, if you want to open up the checkbook for the attorneys, feel free, go right ahead. But I certainly don't want to do that and face all, all that uproar. No, no.
I also think, you know, as both a board member and a taxpayer and a consumer of Wilton's education services. There is an expectation of what we want for our children and for our community.
Absolutely.
And not only for the community right now, but the community that we want a couple of years from now. And in trying times, I think schools serve an even greater importance in holding the foundation of a community together. And it, we start talking about those types of levels. The sadness and the chills that kind of come over me and rush over me, I'm sure shared by many on this, on this call. And I would like, you know, if it winds up being that place, I would like it to not be because of our own doing. But because of, you know, of the strange times and the strange things that are happening. That's something, you know, forces, forces a hand, but not our own hand.
Any other comments?
No. Well, you know, I don't argue this card. Yeah, and I don't think we should, because I don't think we're going to go there. Or at least not with my support. We're not going there. We were lucky enough to have both of our children go through the system, as Ruth talked about. With great experiences, a great education, great social experience. I mean, the whole thing was nothing but positive for us. And that's the reason, one of the reasons we moved here. To think that we would do something now, so conning is that, to take away that from the children who are here today. I can't deal with it. I can't do it. I'm not going to do it. I will not support that under any circumstances. I, I know we have a quite quote crisis situation with the COVID. It's up to us to figure out how do we deliver what needs to be delivered in spite of that. And that's the challenge. The challenge isn't react to it. Challenge is to deal, to deliver what we owe the community, owe our children. The best possible education, the best possible experiences and do it. That's the challenge, not to cut. Challenge isn't to cut. The challenge is to deliver.
Well, I'm reminded that the Board of Finance did ask these as models. Yeah, so I am going to take that to mean these are not, these are theoretical hypothetical models versus any kind of action plan. I can also add that, yeah, I can also add that I'm a member of, I represent Wilton Board of Ed on the CES, the Cooperative Education Service. Their council. And so we meet once a month and we happen to have a meeting this afternoon. And at the very end of going through the normal agenda, everyone, you know, sort of said, okay, so tell us about your budget situations. And there is a wide range of towns represented. Bridgeport was there, Shelton, Westport, Weston, Ridgefield, Trumbull, Monroe, Reading and Greenwich. And no one was contemplating any cuts like minus five percent or minus 10%. Nor were they asked to model them. But, you know, that's okay. I don't mind the modeling part as long as they're not contemplated. There are some headlines around some towns, you know, I'll, I'll take Greenwich because it's been in the papers that their budget has been cut three million. And they absolutely have challenges, but the cut is of their increase. It's not of their current year's expenditure. So they're not going to three million dollars below this year's expenditure. So some people who will say, see, Greenwich cut their budget, you have to sort of dig in a little bit. And realize they're talking usually about decreasing their increase, not going below what they currently have to spend. So it still puts Greenwich in a very challenging spot, but it's not the same as going below their, you know, this year's appropriation. So all districts, I got the feeling that some of them are going to be eking out a small increase. And they hope to be able to do that. And flat is the worst it got. So that's just of the neighboring districts that I have to date. And again, some of this hasn't been finalized, but flat is the worst it seems to have gotten for anybody at this point. And, and most of them have not gotten there. Okay, enough, I guess. Are there any other comments? I'm sorry for taking so much time.
Kevin, could you send to all of us the scenarios, the two, five and 10 scenarios?
I sure will. And I'll, I'll write a summary of my comments just about, you know, the broad scoping potential.
Yeah, so, so we had it in front of us. I, yeah, that'd be great. Appreciate it.
Yeah, we saw the MBR, but we did not see the five and 10. And the staff reductions are staggering. Right, right. We, the staff reductions are staggering. Okay, so we need to approve it, obviously not because we approve or endorse, but simply because we think these accurately fulfill the Board of Finance's request to model the different levels. So is there a motion to approve those models to send on to the Board of Finance that they requested?
Yep, so moved.
Thanks, Glenn. Is there a second? Okay, thanks, Mandy. All right, all in favor again of approving these models to send to the Board of Finance that they requested? That we believe that Kevin and his staff have put together the models that the Board of Finance requested, and this is accurate. So all in favor of that?
Aye.
Say aye. Any opposition? All right, any abstentions? All right, thank you. All right, now we get to move on to something maybe a little bit more cheerful. We're going to talk about discussing approving Wilton High School shortened days of Friday, May fifteenth and Friday, May twenty-second. Kevin, do you want to, everybody got a briefing summary, but you want to just highlight it for us?
Sure. And so just to be clear, this is the all of Wilton Public Schools, not only the high school. And so the Wellness Committee, which is chaired by Maria, came together last week and they were, I just, you know, taking the feedback from, you know, staff and families. And so turned around with a proposal to convert Friday, the fifteenth of May and Friday, the twenty-second of May into early dismissal days with schooling, school ending at noon. I listened to the proposal. I support it. I think it's a very good idea and probably much needed for many. And so I support it. I'd like you to support it. Maria, why don't you go ahead and just give us a background of the conversation?
Sure. So, can you hear me? Okay, so as some members of the board may recall, we started the Wellness Committee a little over a year ago. And the goal of the committee is really to create opportunities to support staff wellness and to focus on self-care for the people who are caring for our students. And since that time, we really had a wonderful school year. We kicked off the year with some water bottles. I have one, happen to have one here with me. It's got our logo on it. Our motto is Wilton Public Schools Wellness Committee, healthier together. We use the funds that are allotted to us through Anthem, our healthcare provider. We receive funds from them annually on wellness activities. So we're able to draw from those for, for different activities that we have for staff. And throughout the course of this year, we've had monthly activities. We have something called Wellness Wednesdays where we send out inspirational messages, recommendations for recipes, recommendations for, you know, wellness and physical activity. We had a step challenge in January where each of our buildings competed internally to see who could achieve the highest number of steps for the year. We had one staff member who reached over one million steps in the month of January. And so these are the kinds of things that we've tried to encourage all of our staff to engage in. And, you know, it's been a challenging couple of months with people at home. And we've received feedback from staff members. We've received feedback even from families. When we sent out the survey about the school calendar. And some of the families requested that we have something like an unannounced snow day, just to give people a break, to give students a break, to give parents a break. We recognize that this has been a challenging situation for everyone. And we also recognize that working from home has been particularly challenging for teachers because teachers, while they always work from home in the evening, they're not teaching from home. And so the work environment is not set up typically for, for instruction. It's been, I think, challenging physically for people to be in front of screens and to be in home environments where, you know, the setup is not necessarily ergonomically ideal. And just in listening to the feedback from the staff and from the families, the Wellness Committee proposed having two early dismissal days. One, May fifteenth, one, May twenty-second, as the superintendent said. And those days really would be opportunities for students and staff to end the day early and focus on activities related to their wellness. The committee would like to recommend activities for students and staff. You know, we would have a range of activities ranging from recipes, outdoor activities, virtual activities. Fitness, obviously, and those would all be optional because we recognize that wellness means different things to different people. So people may choose to observe the wellness afternoon in a different way. But we certainly want to put recommendations out there for people. And then we will encourage them to tag us. We have our Wilton Way CT hashtag and our WPS, we still can hashtag, where we have people who are posting activities that they're doing even in spite of. where we have people who are posting activities that they're doing even in spite of all of the challenges that we face and the restrictions that we face through this pandemic. So we're hopeful that this is something that the board will support, because we think this is, self-care and wellness is important, it's more important now than ever. And we think this is something that could be very beneficial, not just for our staff, but also for our students and families.
Makes sense. It really does.
So is this funded then by your insurance, by their insurance, the Anthem you mentioned?
So I was just, yeah, I was speaking broadly that, you know, we choose to have activities throughout the school year. Some of them are no cost whatsoever, and some of them do have a small cost. For example, our walking challenge had a small cost, because we had prizes. And we awarded each winner in the building a Fitbit Versa, which obviously had a cost to it, but we were able to pay for that through funds that were provided by Anthem for wellness activities. So if we don't use those funds, we actually lose them, because they're supposed to be designated specifically for wellness activities.
Okay.
Water bottles, our water bottles were no cost to the district.
My other question is, there's only two more Fridays after those two. Was there discussion about having those two Fridays also be considered more wellness and cut, you know, cut at 12 o'clock or close at 12?
We didn't discuss that, because, you know, honestly, we thought even having one day would be wonderful, and we didn't go beyond two, because, you know, we didn't want to, we know that this is somewhat uncharted territory, and we didn't want to go beyond, you know, what the board would think was acceptable. We also recognize that as we near the end of the school year, there are other activities that are going on. It's also, I think, more critical for teachers to finish out their activities. Where we may be preparing students for, you know, culminating projects, and teachers may want to be available to them. I think it's certainly something that we can consider, but the committee did not speak about anything beyond two.
Isn't the last Friday typically a half day anyway?
And I'm sorry that I don't know whether June 10th is a Friday. The last few days are always half days.
Yeah, the last few days are typically half days as it is, right?
The last several days are normally half days, that's correct. We would keep that schedule.
Right, so these would be in addition to that, which is fine. More power. Go for it. Yeah, I think everyone.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I just think a lot of people are getting burned out on the e-learning right now, parents and kids. I really do. The thing, you know what I'm hearing, it's enough is enough already, you know? So we can give them some relief from that. I think it would be well received.
All right, any other comments? Is there a motion to approve the shortened days of May 15th and May 22nd? Designate them as wellness half days? Is there a motion? Thank you, Glenn. Is there a second? I'm sorry. All right, Gretchen, I think I saw your hand first. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Hello? Thank you.
Deliver the good news, Maria.
This is my sound, I apologize. Okay. All right, anybody opposed? All right, Melon Chan carries, thank you. All right, let's go back to Section D on reports. And we're going to talk about year end, or end of year celebrations first. And there are several, and Kevin, I don't know how you've organized it, but I'll turn it over to you.
Start with Bob. So that's the big question, I think, on everybody's mind is, you know, what are we thinking about for graduation, especially in light of the governor's comment yesterday. So Bob, why don't you give us a rundown?
Sure. So firstly, we have an excellent graduation committee that is seated right now, comprised of student leaders, parent leaders, senior class advisors, Mr. Shells, our senior class principal, our student government faculty advisors, Dr. Harvey and Mrs. Bray. So we're really working concertedly to ensure that we can design something that will be fitting to celebrate this really, really outstanding class of 2020, because we recognize, as we've all talked about, this has been very different from them. And the ceremony will look different. We understand that, and we recognize that, you know, the governor weighed in earlier in the week about having, you know, probably virtual graduations being the best way to go and not live ceremonies in June. And we met as district and town officials earlier in the week and feel that along the lines of safety, that that is probably the best approach at this time. To our, to their credit, our students are not very interested in a true virtual graduation. And I say that to their credit, because they have a number of ideas. We actually had another graduation committee meeting today. So I'll just take the board through some of the possibilities that we're considering, none of which we decided upon. We have some more research to do, and we also will be meeting again next Thursday. One of the topics we talked about at Lent today was the possibility of, you know, postponing the ceremony in the hopes of still having some type of social distancing, live ceremony. And we recognize as a committee that may be a risk, but it's still on the table. Families can anticipate that our student leaders would be sending out some type of survey, trying to inquire about summer vacation plans. And if there's a window later on in the summer, when we could do something like this safely and students would not have left for college and/or other opportunities. So that is one thing that we're considering. The other thing that we've had a lot of good conversation about is some type of graduation parade, if you will. And many of you may have seen these on social media. So the students would be in their cars with their families, as a nuclear family, a family unit. And we have the support of the Town Health Director, that that could be a safe approach, because these families are, of course, living together already. So, you know, for example, and this is just an example, you know, the students could take a route. They mentioned early on the desire to maybe have a parade by all four of the schools. So the idea that they may start at Miller Driscoll, proceed through Middlebrook, proceed through Cider Mill, arriving at the high school, and then we could organize some really, really cool ceremony in front of the high school, where we'd have the opportunity to have students get their picture taken with their families, with their diploma, their diploma cover, and have that be memorialized that way. We have our student musicians, through the leadership of Nick Loefman and Kevin Cottles, et cetera. They could do some type of, you know, E projection of music, fitting music for the class and for the graduation ceremony. So that is currently under consideration as well. The students are not, the students like the idea to some extent of the parade, but they really feel as if, if we did that, every student would not have the opportunity to see all of the students in the class honored and celebrated. So we are exploring the possibility of some type of drive-in ceremony. So a graduation parade, which, you know, could culminate in a drive-in ceremony. So if you could picture, there would be giant screens with a projection and a stage and, you know, some speeches, although they've talked about modifying the extent to which there be speeches, and the students receiving their diploma with their families. We'd have to work out the details of that, but we talked to the Town Health Director about that possibility, and it's still on the table. One of the limitations there that we're finding is that to find a space where we could have the entire, you know, class, 300 strong in all of their different cars, all lined up seeing a screen, could be a challenge. So we're working through some of those logistics and try to figure that out a little bit. One possibility that was put on the table today by the students, I would emphasize, and this is not an ideal, but they're wondering if we could not all get in one area at the same time. Would we ever, you know, split the ceremony and divide it up and have, you know, a couple of back-to-back ceremonies where we'd honor the students, you'd still be able to get, you know, maybe, let's say, 150 cars in one drive-in ceremony is a possibility. And then the students actually submitted today, and we were brainstorming, are there actual, you know, drive-in theaters? And we've located a couple within about an hour of Wilton, where you could do a true drive-in graduation ceremony with a big screen and appropriate music and acknowledgement, and students being acknowledged and, you know, pictured on the screen. And that's a possibility. So anyways, there are a number of options on the table. And one of the things that we always value in this committee work is the student voice. And that's always been one of the hallmarks of the process. We've got great student leaders, and we're trying to work with them to find a way to really celebrate this class, this class in true Wilton or here form. So those are some of the possibilities on the table right now. And then, very briefly, beyond graduation, we are working on designing some, basically some virtual award ceremonies, you know, the academic award ceremony, the Fine and Performing Arts Award Ceremony, and the Athletics Award Ceremony. And we have our next Senior Prom Committee meeting tomorrow. So those are some of the highlights we're working on as we approach the end of the year.
Thanks, Bob. Any questions or comments for Bob?
I like the drive-in thing, sounds great. That would be fun, to go to a drive-in. I grew up going to drive-ins.
Bob, it's Mandy. I am just thrilled the students are behind. I just, I love that the students are doing this, and I love that they're the ones driving this bus.
It's the Wilton Way. Thank you, Mandy.
Yep.
If there's nothing else.
Any other comments? Yeah, I also think it's great. Yeah, very creative. Thank you. All right, go ahead, Kevin.
Yep, Lauren, you're up. Lauren, can you hear, your mic is muted.
Lauren, I think you're still on mute.
There you go.
It was brilliant what I said. Just kidding. You know, we think that children being ready to move up to high school is just a huge occasion to mark, and we have a very strong tradition in soaring ahead, which is our moving up ceremony. We are definitely, we've had quite a bit of conversation, particularly with the eighth grade team leaders, about parts of the tradition that we can maintain, and also some things that we may add to enhance a celebration. Certainly, our soaring head celebration will be centered around a video and featuring student speeches, addresses from key staff members, just the same kinds of welcome from Dr. O'Donnell to the high school. And it would be available, I think that what we hope to do is to launch it at like an official time, that we hope that people will participate sort of in the ceremony together, but it would certainly be available for families to enjoy asynchronously as well. There are definitely some suggestions being sort of proffered from our parent community, and we welcome those. And it's definitely a work in progress in terms of what all of the finishing touches will be. Students will receive a certificate that they certainly will be able to access electronically. And we will, the teachers are already hard at work on making sure that every student has a special quote, which is part of our tradition, from a teacher who really connects with them and cares about them. And I think that while the quotes won't be read out loud, we will have a way during the ceremony to feature each eighth grader. I think our plan is to set it up so that there's a, you can either watch the whole ceremony start to finish as one viewing opportunity, or there could be links to separate sections, so that families could sort of curate what it is that they choose to access. So that's the plan as I understand it.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments?
Lauren, I was just wondering, do you have any ideas on dates yet, to start getting that out to the families?
I do believe that we have a tentative date set. And it's, I know that it was sent to be on the calendar to Lucille, but I just have to, I'm sorry, I'm in a screen with you all, and I need to go find it. It's, can I get back to you on that?
The tentative date, I think that's being held is June 8th.
Thank you.
I think the video is a great idea. So I think that that, you know, I think it'd be great for the kids and everyone to be able to watch it maybe at the same time.
Thank you, Gretchen. I appreciate you consulting with me on that. I do know that the eighth grade teams are also planning sort of an end-of-the-year huddle that will be more personal exposure to all of the teachers on the team. And they have, in addition, we are doing our end-of-the-year award ceremonies by video as well. And there will be electronic certificates that families can access. But there is a tradition of sort of each team sort of tying a bow on the end of the experience. And I know that the eighth grade team leaders have been communicating about what that will look like. By design, it won't be the same for every team, because each of our teams has their own culture. But we will be giving as meaningful a version of our end-of-year traditions as possible to our students.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Jen.
All right, so we will be celebrating our closing of the year as well. Very sad to be doing it virtually. Somehow, I was still thinking there was some way we were going to end up together to close out the year. So we will be working, I'm going into next week, we're going to obviously be planning with Middlebrook how to transition and plan for our fifth graders moving up to Middlebrook. But in terms of celebrations, we've got lots planned. We will be working, obviously, with the Health Department and other district officials. But we are hoping to be able to celebrate our fifth grade with some kind of parade or caravan, I should say. We'll also be doing the typical celebrations that we do, although virtually. And we'll be having a slideshow. We'll be working with the PTA yearbook reps from the PTA. And they've got tons of pictures that I know Ms. O'Keefe is working on a really nice video for them. Every classroom will be having some type of closing house, where we'll be celebrating parts of the e-learning portfolio that our students will be creating. We are also going to be celebrating our fifth graders with some type of special little gift. We're still working on that. And let's see, what else here? Yes, that's really it. We did send out a newsletter yesterday that had all of the dates. Oh, the other thing is our PTA, we will be distributing our yearbooks as we usually do, but we're still working out the logistics for that as well.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Oh, yeah, last thing is, we are having a virtual field day as well. So that should be fun.
Field day, all right. You sure invite us. We'd love to see that. You'll be leading the tug of war. Okay, thank you.
Kathy, you're up.
All right, well, similar to what Dr. Falcone talked about, a lot of our celebrations are the same. First, just our portfolio of pride is going to be a huge celebration. So it celebrates the academics and the specials and let grow. And like Jen said, they do closing house. We call it celebration of learning, so there will be a version of that. And then hopefully the, if, hopefully the parents who are listening will be happy to know that we're going to also do a version of the second grade picnic, which is, you know, which is kind of our graduation. But, and so we'll do that Friday, June 5th, and we have booked a magician. And then we're going to come up with just some, you know, additional activities for the kids to enjoy, whether they're outside, or some virtual field trips to museums and things like that. And then we're looking at, you know, concerts and art shows and virtual field days and working with our specialists on that. So hopefully the next five weeks will be packed with fun.
Yep. Great. Any questions or comments for Kathy? Well, I'm just so impressed how all of you are just diving right in and, and, you know, trying to be as creative as possible. And I realize it's going to be, you know, certainly work for your staff and parents. And I'm so glad that the kids are involved wherever possible. You know, so you're, you're making the best of a really strange, weird, sad situation. So I thank you for emphasizing the happiness. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question for Bob. How are the yearbooks coming for the high school? That's, that's a major, you know, project. Are we, what's happening with that?
Was the question, how are they, how are they looking?
The yearbook. Yeah, yearbooks. What are we, you know?
Well, my understanding is they're, they're on track because fortunately many of the photos that are taken are taken earlier in the year. And so we just have to, we just have to find a way to, we're working on, on a number of fronts, just how do you distribute things to students in a, in a safe and effective manner? And, and we will find a way to do so, including, for example, caps and gowns. But the good news for really the whole school, but the class of 2020 is that the, the yearbooks are on track and it's always a very high quality product. And I would anticipate nothing less this year. We're all looking forward to it. Any celebrations we can engage in right now?
I could.
We don't need these.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, yearbooks are important to the students, seniors. And no, that's great. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Kevin, the next item is review and discuss reentry planning.
So we just wanted to take a few minutes tonight and update the board on our thinking. So I'm going to turn this portion of the conversation over to Chuck, who's going to share a screen and just walk us through a couple of slides that really highlight our planning and the laundry list of logistical considerations we need to entertain in the various goals that we have laid out. So Chuck, I've made you the host now, so you should be able to share your screen.
Can you see? Can everybody see it?
Yeah, I've got it. Yeah, there it is.
Yeah, too many windows open.
Yay. Okay, good. Yeah. All right, so I think as we have been acknowledging for a few weeks now, we're all facing a very uncertain future. And it makes it difficult to plan, but in many ways it also makes it more essential that we plan. You know, we really need to think about what the different scenarios are so that we're not caught unprepared the way we were when school was closed. So we committed to making a concerted and thoughtful effort to move forward with planning and to think about the different possible scenarios that we, we might encounter. So we started, oh, and I wanted to say that the, the place we're in right now is what we're trying to do is to kind of scope out the problem and develop an approach. We're not quite ready to share detailed action plans. That would be the next step. But as I said before, we're facing a lot of uncertainty. And so we're trying to define the problem very clearly and to come up with a very well-defined approach so that we can come up with the different plans that we're going to need to do. So we started by developing a purpose and a vision. And that's to continue teaching and learning in a way that promotes the academic growth and wellness of our students while also ensuring the health and safety of all members of the school community. You know, when we started this, we were thinking it was going to be a reopening plan. But we're not necessarily sure that we'll be reopening. So we want to, we want to plan for the different scenarios, but the, the core purpose here is to make sure that we continue teaching and learning in a way that helps our students to grow and maintains everybody's safety, no matter what scenario we were facing. So we've thought, as we do with all planning, to start with a theory of action. And so we want to develop some robust plans for a variety of possible scenarios for the continuation of teaching and learning. And we believe if we do that, then we'll be prepared for an uncertain future during this COVID-19 pandemic. And we believe these plans have to be very detailed and thorough and coordinated across schools, departments and community agencies. And so we've developed about nine goals. And those include first and foremost, developing, developing a plan for deciding if, when, how and for whom schools will be reopened. There's a lot of things that would go into that particular goal, and it's not a goal that we would make in isolation. We would certainly be making the decision about reopening in conjunction with town and state officials. But I think we need to recognize the fact that although we may be required to open at a certain time, there's also a possibility that given what's going on in our particular community, we may have to close and then reopen again. So it's important that we think through all the factors that might be pertinent to any decisions about closing and reopening. We also want to develop a very robust learning management system because there's a likelihood that we may have intermittent school closures in the future. I do think that everyone has done an amazing job under the circumstances, but we weren't prepared for it. And a more robust learning management system will ensure that we are prepared for any eventuality. You know, we've also discussed the other basic three goals around determining what students know and able to do academically when we're back and developing a plan for adjusting the curriculum based upon that information. And based upon the fact that we might be closed again, which might require some further compacting of the curriculum. And we imagining the process for how we identify students in need of academic intervention. And we might have to think about, depending upon the number of students who are in need of remediation, we thinking how they will be served. Certainly, our, our, our major goals would be to promote the wellness of our students, teachers and parents, given everything that everybody's been through. And we want to make sure that we're reaching out and supporting our families and students who may need some extra TLC. I do believe that given the circumstances, what our juniors have gone through, we need to give our seniors next year some special attention. And we need to really think carefully about making sure that they have kind of a seamless access to post-secondary opportunities. And we'll be asking the high schools to, to kind of address that goal. All of these goals are somewhat interconnected and are going to require a lot of coordination and certainly a lot of communication among all of our stakeholder groups. So that's one of our goals, to develop a very tight system of coordination and communication. And then, of course, we have to think about staffing. Given the contemplated changes in the learning via, in the learning environment and the educational delivery model, we really need to think through how we're going to go about staffing. So each of these goals has a lot of considerations. And just in the interest of time, I didn't think we would want to go through all of them. So I'm just going to go through the first goal, just to give you an idea of the scope of the things that we're, we're going to be dealing with. So if you recall from an earlier slide, the goal was really about deciding if, when, how and for whom we would be reopening and maybe re-closing again. So some of the considerations we have to think about are the public health risks. You know, to what extent, to what extent can the health of students, family, staff and the general population be safeguarded while opening our schools? Also, to what extent does the school closure contribute to loss of income and unemployment in Wilton community? What impact does it have on student learning? And one thing that I'm very concerned about is to what extent are we ready to reopen with the right health and safety measures in place? We also have to think about student academic and social emotional needs. We have to look at various demographics as well as the school, the school community priorities. There are different scenarios we have to think about. There is a possibility that we will not be able to reopen. There's also a possibility that we may want to target certain groups or levels or grade levels. And it's quite possible we might have to phase in a reopening. We have to think about the physical infrastructure. You know, changes to ensure social distancing, to enable health and sanitization protocols and to create healthy buildings. We have to think about things like ventilation. We also have to think about transportation and food services. And we may have to make changes to the routes, to how buses are clean. We have to think about the packaging of food and utensils and lunch schedules and locations. We have to think about how free and reduced lunches can occur during distance learning. Yeah. And then we also have to think about scheduling and staffing. We, we may have to adapt the way we schedule to reduce the number of students on site at any time. We might have to create cohorts that would minimize interactions between students and teachers. We'll probably have to avoid large group gatherings and so forth. This is one of the most important things, a public thing we need to start with. And hopefully we'll get some guidance from the state department about this. And that's around health and behavioral norms. You have to think about social distancing. We have to think about personal protective equipment. Even hand washing can be a bit of a challenge. You know, to put into place some of the hand washing protocols, we'd have to think about the number of sink we have, where they're located, how we can have kids frequently hand washing while maintaining social distancing. So even something as simple as hand washing really creates some logistical challenges. We have to think about students sharing supplies and materials. You know, in the typical classroom, there's a lot of sharing and we may not be able to do that. We're going to have to think about how kids and staff enter and exit the school site. There's a possibility we may have to tempt kids, tempt staff. We have to think about enhanced cleaning and sanitization of the buildings. There's issues around contact tracing. And then if, if there is an incident, what are our emergency and the disease management protocols? And then how do we train everybody in all of this? We also have to think about re-enrollment procedures. You know, we do have some high-risk students and families and even staff. Will we offer an opt-out for some, some people? What would be the distance learning options for certain groups that may not be able to attend school? We have to think about updating health records and also protecting everybody's privacy. We also have to think about the resurgence of COVID. What would be the process for closing the school? What criteria would be used? And would be, would be, we be ready for distance learning? And then there's things, you know, that we generally do around this time that we're not able to do. Well, at least as well, technology, curriculum materials, the library, facilities and so forth. So you know what, let me share something else here before I get to the timeline. So this is the text, the full text that I developed that PowerPoint from. All I did here was go over goal one. All of this has to be considered just for goal one. The management system, Fran has a whole project management plan that I couldn't even fit here. This is some of the stuff that we're thinking about for goal three, goal four, goal five, goal six, all the way down to goal nine. From all of these goals, we're now going to have to develop these rather detailed action plans. So that would actually be our next step. So this is, sorry. This is the timeline. So during May and June, we're going to develop working groups around each of these goals. And they're going to develop the action plans. And we plan to give you an update on that work at, I think, the May 21 meeting. Phase two will be during June, July and August. The working groups will engage not only in further planning, but also to begin to implement some of those action plans. And that's going to include robust communication with students, parents and staff. And then phase three would be the working groups will continue to refine and implement the reopening plans throughout 2021. So I was just wondering, that's a lot. Does anybody have any questions, comments?
Yeah, it's absolutely.
I'm sorry.
No, it's absolutely mind-boggling, Chuck, what you guys are having to go through. I guess a question Kevin would be, is there any sense that K, who represents all of us really, can put pressure to bear on the state and perhaps to say can't, to really develop as quickly as humanly possible what their guidelines are going to be? I mean, the problem is all of what Chuck has described and talked about, which is lengthy, maybe for not, depending on what the guidelines the state provides could go right out the window. And it will be dictated by whatever the state says will be what we are required to do. So to the extent the state can develop as quickly as possible, what their expectations are, the guidelines are going to operate within, will make all of your jobs and challenges not easy, but perhaps easier or more, more specifically, more targeted. And out of cave is, is the, the way to go to try to get the pressure from the state to, to come on guys, do something, figure it out or not.
And that's a, it's a really good question. And every group that I participate in on this topic outside of Wilton. So I was on that call this morning with a group of the superintendents from Western Connecticut. Tomorrow I'll be on another call with the Southern Fairfield group. We're interfacing all the time. And I also am participating in the Commissioner's Fairfield County Regional Reentry Task Force, which is comprised of public school officials from the 21 communities around us here. And so that, that is the, absolutely the question. And what I would say is, I suspect, I know for a fact, and in fact, that they absolutely are already feeling the pressure and recognize that all of those considerations that Chuck just laid out are dependent on the guidance that's issued. What we're anticipating is guidance coming in waves. And so what the commissioner has said is on May 15th, we can expect guidance for summer school, summer camps. My hunch is that guidance will reflect some of the guidance that's currently in place for, excuse me, childcare programs. And what you can expect is, you know, small group sizes, social distancing, et cetera. But they're working at the state department, I think, as rapidly as possible. And the other thing I would just remind everybody is, you know, over the years, the state department has also been subject to dramatic budget cuts. So there just aren't a lot of staff members up there available to do this kind of work. So the folks that are there are doing double and triple duty, trying to, you know, manage all of these many requests.
Yeah, as all of you guys are doing double and triple duty. Chuck, I was really wondering, you, it's very detailed and obviously you guys have put a lot of thought into it. Sadly, I just don't know what we can do out of a reality sample until we get guidance from the state. You know, so, so the things you've talked about may or may not be necessary or important or maybe totally impacted greatly. I, it's just hard to say right now. And I, it's a challenge for all of you. It really is. I appreciate the efforts.
You know, my hope is that we can get a lot of guidance from the state, but I'm afraid to wait for it.
Yeah.
So we're really trying to figure out what the different scenarios might be and develop, actually these different scenarios that we're ready.
Yeah, I mean, what I thought I had is that perhaps, yeah, at some point because of the density of the population, schools and the classrooms and the distancing, half the students go one day, the other half the students go the next day, the next day, the other half, you alternate days. I mean, there's so many things that could come down to minimize risk. Who knows what it's going to be?
Glenn, I was stuck on. So Tryce said, I was stuck on just trying to get kids to school. So I was imagining a scenario where, you know, we have, we're trying to socially distance young, our young children at bus stops. Trying to imagine socially distancing them on buses. And then if there are health screening requirements in place, you know, at what point do those happen? So this morning, as I was thinking about this, I was like entertaining this scenario where a bus driver, you know, could be charged with using a touchless thermometer. And I just, I mean, I can't get my head around that. But, you know, I mean, the logistics of just getting kids to school are overwhelming. And then, you know, move on to now that they're there, what do you do?
Then when you get them to the school, how do you let them in? What do you have to do to get them in? Do you check everyone's temperature? I mean, there's. I mean, there's so many things that could, it's crazy, just in.
All right. I want to give Ruth a chance to talk. Ruth, I thought you had a question.
It wasn't so much a question as I appreciate the magnitude and the enormity of the task at hand. I think that Chuck, you're right, that we kind of wait for the state a little bit at, to our detriment. And I think having a great understanding of what our own infrastructure can handle is probably a good place to start because we know that there will be some type of social distance requirements. And there is a physical limitation with, with space and facilities. And then just my other thought is just even if we have more than one scenario that we're outlining, to maybe communicate what, what the, that tentative organization of, of how and when kids are physically present in school comes sooner than later as parents start to negotiate reentry with, and with their own employment and employers. And I'm just trying to make that as kind of consistent as possible. I know that I had read somewhere, I think some schools, some states were looking at some ideas of, you know, some students Monday, Wednesday, Friday, some students Tuesday, Thursday, and then alternating that. And my, and like, I'm just thinking like of waking up as a parent and being like, what week am I in? You know, or trying to, you know, know how I'm going to like schedule my own kind of work and childcare around that type of rotating schedule. So I think that, you know, trying just to game some of those out a bit and getting some feed, feedback from the community and trying to kind of assess, you know, our physical limitations and see what is even possible is, I, I, I think a good place to start and kind of, you know, the earlier we can let parents in on, you know, that type of thinking or those, those types of, you know, organization processes. I, I think, you know, the better.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, I was going to say. Fortunately, we do have some places to look to. There have been places in Europe that have taken different approaches. And I think that's where we're going to start and try to narrow down what seems to be the most common ways in which this, this reopening of schools has been approached. We're also going to be getting some data about the effectiveness of those approaches, right? So the resurgence information will be flowing as these different approaches are used. And I think we can narrow in on what seemed to be the most effective. And Ruth, I do hope that parents will be part of this whole process of figuring out, are we going to approach these different goals?
Yeah, I, I think it is important to include the parents to the extent possible, you know, that makes sense. You know, their partnership has been, you know, changed in this online learning and it's going to, you know, go into another evolution next year. You know, the families will have to be, you know, inter, inter, very much integrated into whatever plans are implemented. And thank you for taking the different scenario approach. You know, trying to, you know, start on many different roads. And then maybe as time gets, goes by, you can start to eliminate some or, you know, maybe even expand, who knows? But, you know, my first thought is how overwhelming this is, you know, on, on every single level, you know, you can imagine. And as hard as it was to close and the challenges we went through with that, this is even more complex. So, you know, it, it's amazing that we even have to think this way. And I know we have a great team, but for now I'm just overwhelmed, you know, just at the beginning of, of this thinking. It's also why I have scheduled more Board of Ed meetings. They're tentative, but you know, as we unveil these plans or get down these roads and, you know, want to keep the board apprised and the community apprised, it will probably take more, more meetings as well by us as a board. So that's why I've, I've calendared on a tentative basis every Thursday between now and June 18th. And we may have to do more than that. And if we don't need one, then we, then we don't have to have one. But I just wanted to sort of give everybody a heads up, get it on the calendar. So in addition to every other week, we're going to start meeting weekly if needed. So I'll take Kevin's lead.
I think that makes sense ever. It really does because we don't, things are going to be coming down the pike so fast and furious that we're going to have to deal with, I hope, quickly. It makes sense to do that. You know, it's a good move.
Yeah, yeah. Well, again, if we don't need a meeting, we won't have one, but I just want to keep us available. But thank you so much to, to Kevin and Chuck for, I mean, I, your work groups. You know, Kevin said the State Department didn't have enough staff. Are we staffed enough to reasonably be able to do this? And I mean that seriously.
I think we're very lucky to have a lot of people who could help with this. I think the challenge for us is getting ducked from the day-to-day operations of this emergency learning and finding the time to look forward. You know, this is very unusual for us and it's taking up a lot of time to, to kind of shift gears now and think about the future is challenging, but there are a lot of talented people around who I think we can draw, even in the community.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, just Chuck's last comment that people in the community, if there's something that you feel you need to help you in this process, let us know. And we can maybe as a board try and spare it out support for you in some way or find someone that can give you some assistance. So don't be hesitant and don't be shy about asking as you're trying to move this forward. Okay? Thanks.
Yeah, good point. And, and that also is another expla, exclamation point after our budget proposal that we're presenting to the Board of Finance. You know, clearly we need resources for this. And so to diminish those is, is a mistake. Okay. We've opened a can of worms, more than that. But I, I bet thank you for giving us a glimpse. Thank you for bringing it to us so early. Thanks for organizing it so well. Really appreciate that. Thank you.
Fortunately, it's only a can of worms and not a snake pit.
Let's hope, yeah. But it is, it is overwhelming. So anyway, thank you for beginning. All right. There's some future business and information items there. And I guess I already went over those. Those are the additional Thursday night meetings, just to try to get into a weekly cycle, stand, you know, stand, you know, on call kind of thing. And I'll take it from Kevin as to which meetings are needed. That brings us to comments from the public. Lucille, I'm not sure if you got any more during the meeting or at this point.
I just checked my email. I don't have any additional comments.
Okay.
We had a lot of.
All right, then we have completed. Yeah, no, it's great. Yeah, we have a great audience and I think I'll say it again, the Board of Finance would like to hear opinions about our proposed budget. So thank you. Please, please consider emailing. All right, we have finished the agenda, so I am adjourning this meeting. So thank you, everybody, staff members for staying, sticking with us and board members for putting forward what I think is a, is as good a budget plan as possible in this time. And Kevin, thank you and your staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good night, everyone.